Then I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Henry Ford College Regular Board Meeting on March 15, 2021. This is a virtual meeting occurring on Zoom. The meeting number is 988-418-85025. Meeting is called to order. I have a roll call, please.
Trustee Sam Berry.
Here, Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Patrick De Ambrosio.
Here, Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald.
Here in Dearborn.
Trustee Adam Mosip here in Dearborn, Michigan. Trustee Mary Peteskov.
Here in Dearborn.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan.
Chair James Thorpe.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan. Before we go on, I'm going to make sure that the trustees that just joined us, we've got the ability that if you want to mute yourself, you will be able to unmute yourself without having to ask permission. So at any point, feel free to mute yourself when we're doing presentations or anything. With that, next item, please.
Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting on February 15, 2021. Make any necessary changes or corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved.
I second it.
We've got a motion by trustee Barry, supported by trustee Ozio. Any corrections? All right, seeing and hearing none. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee De Ambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mosip, yes. Trustee Peteskov.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thorpe.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is president's items.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Chairman and trustees, good evening. I am happy to see you. We are late as a result of the committee meeting that I was talking during. So I apologize to keep you waiting and I appreciate your patience. I will take the liberty of congratulating one of your colleagues on a birthday. One of your newest colleagues, trustee Watts, is celebrating the happiest time of the year today. And I want to say happy birthday to you. And I think you've got the first birthday maybe of the new year. I'm not sure. Maybe we did have a, no, no, trustee Barry beat you by like a week and a half. He was, I think, a week and a half ago. So trustee Barry, happy birthday to you also. We have some retirements that I want to recognize. We have Cheryl Beniac, who was with us as a part-time accounting clerk for six years. And then we have Michelle Miller, who was a facilities associate in the facilities department for 21 years. And then finally, I need to apologize that it's taken me a couple of months to get to this and it's just been my mistake in not saying it sooner. But those of you know Debbie Schmansky, she was the associate dean of the School of Health and Human Services, a faculty member. She was a good friend to me as a new president and probably a staple for many of you because she, in her retirement, just the beginning of this year, ended 38 and a half years of service at the college. I'm hopeful and proud that she'll be able to enjoy a healthy and well-deserved vacation, I think is what it'll probably be because I can't imagine her sitting very still. But if she decides to enjoy it as she should, it'll be retirement. And Debbie, I apologize that I haven't named you sooner and I look forward to hearing about all your adventures during retirement. I also wanted to give you trustees an update on our efforts at return to campus. I know that that's something you all are quite interested in. Last time we met, I told you that the core team would be meeting very, very soon and it did intend to do that. It was intending to meet on March 5th, but that meeting did not occur because the subgroups determined that they were not quite ready to come back together as a core team. And so they did cancel that March 5th meeting and they have pre-scheduled that meeting to occur at the end of this week, March 19. And they will be continuing to meet in their smaller subgroups. That has been going on throughout and when the core team meets with, of course, your colleague trustee McDonald joining them, the topics that they'll be reviewing are factors that will help them decide when and if to move to Phase 4 of our Return to Campus Plan, which of course would entail additional staff returning to campus. They'll be discussing whether our screening protocols are the appropriate level right now or whether they should be changed. The big item on that list will be the fall semester scheduling and the mode of delivery of educational services and classes for the fall. And as some of you who enjoy the culinary department as much as I do, will be interested to know where they will also be discussing when we'll be reopening our restaurant 5101 for the spring and summer term. I have two other items that will go pretty quickly, but I'll pause there for any questions on any of the topics I've addressed so far.
Think you're good to keep going.
All right. Let's move to something that I'm excited about and proud and hopeful that will give a lot of our students the much-needed support that they've been waiting for. And that is a process that we rolled out just today to help students, and those are students in this very term, with what was the second-to-last federal stimulus bill, I believe was passed in December and the acronym was CRRS, which stands for the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. Again, this was in the last calendar year that sent several billions of, almost a trillion dollars across the country. And the money is now getting to this institution and we have set up a system for students to request funds for help during their travails of the coronavirus college and all the other things that are associated with that. The process for students is that they apply to the financial aid department and are eligible for grants. And we plan to start rolling those out right now until the funding associated with this act is extinguished. Now, I keep saying this act because you all know that between the last board meeting we had and today, the Congress and the president have acted again in a $1.9 trillion infusion of monies to support the country and its citizens. I'm not talking at all about that right now. This is all just the one that happened before that and that was in the December CRSA. And students can apply for monetary grants. And I'll just be blunt, it's cash in students' pockets. And this last one, this last act allowed students to use the funding much more liberally. They can use it to pay tuition. They can use it to pay fees to the college. But they can also use it for food or for housing or for healthcare, including mental healthcare or childcare. It is a very important process we've set up and it wasn't easy because as you know, the United States government transitioned between presidential administrations and of course, that may have had some effect on the Department of Education, who's had the authority to direct the regulations about sending this money to students. But we're positive that this process will meet with the federal guidelines associated with it and we're also excited that it will help students who just last several months. We have polled students and asked them, tell us where your pain points are. Tell us what is the most difficult thing for you right now. And we had almost 800 students respond and the number one thing they wanted was tuition assistance, support for tuition. And so this will be, to use the pun, medicine directly at the thing that ills them. And I'm excited that we're able to help our students that way. Some questions that I've heard about this is when will the money move? It'll move now, as soon as students apply. It's a one-page application that students can enter electronically. And this allotment is more than $4.5 million that we plan to move out right now. Again, this has nothing to do with the latest stimulus funding. I hope to have more news about that soon. Of course, there will be regulations associated with that, but that is an exciting development that we have there. Mr. Chairman, I will ask for an opportunity to speak to the board during trustee comments related to some HR proposals that are action items. And I've made my comments particularly brief this time because there's some people who are much easier to listen to, in fact, more enjoyable to listen to than me and they're next on your agenda. So if I'll take any questions and then I'll be quiet and let you move to anything else on your agenda. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I see you have some questions.
Trustee Peteskov.
Hi, yeah. Just for the people who are listening, what's the maximum cap on those funds per student that they can apply for?
I believe trustee or Vice President Satkowski confirmed for me it's anywhere from $600 to $2,000 per student. And of course, the Department of Education required us to focus this on students with the most need. And the system is set up that way. And we're not quite sure how the process will go. We hope that these funds will move out to students in grants from $600 to $2,000 quickly. But if it doesn't move out quickly, then we'll amend the process to make sure this money keeps moving. There is no other way, there's no other place we're going to move these funds other than directly to students.
So would that be per semester then? So that if we have this other, or is that for last year going, moving forward or?
So this last act, the CARISA Act, had much fewer restrictions. So to answer your question, these students can nearly do whatever they want with this money. It goes directly to them and they can pay down tuition outstanding balance if they choose from previous terms. They can pay for tuition this term if they choose. Or if they are arrears on their rent, they can pay for that. The federal legislation was pretty specific that they didn't want us policing the use of this money to the extent that some of the previous stimulus funding was. And so it'll go out right now until it's gone and the students will be able to use it, not completely without limitation, but much fewer limitations than in previous. And remember, we did this for students last semester with a similar system. But we were obligated to follow regulations that required us to do a little more policing of how and for what the money went to. This is much less of that.
So I guess what I'm really saying is it's a one-time, can they only apply for this once? Or if they got something last year, they can't apply again? Or can they keep reapplying each time?
So they can apply, they can apply for this round of funding once. Now, I hope that this is not the case and we set it up so that it won't. But if for some reason students apply and we don't get enough applications in their remaining funds, I could imagine a circumstance where we solicit again for this round of funding. But this round of funding gave the institution a little more than $4.5 million that directed it to go directly to students. And so there's no limitations about whether students were previous students at HFC or previous recipients of federal funding stimulus. The restrictions are pretty limited. They are that they have completed a FAFSA for the fiscal year, that they have completed and submitted all the financial aid documents, that they are enrolled in a degree granting program at the college, that they have met satisfactory academic progress standards and that they'd be otherwise eligible to receive titles for financial aid. And again, these are not things that the college may associate with. These are from the legislation and/or the appropriate attendant regulations from the DOE.
President Cavalluna. This is though in reference to students that were enrolled for classes in fall 2020, correct?
It's, the only restriction here is that they have been, that they are enrolled at least, be enrolled at least one winter 2021 class required for their program of study. So it's for students enrolled in the current semester.
Trustee McDonald.
My question was, there we go. With Hawkstrong and the other systems that we have, the supports that we have available, have they still been used? Are students still using them? And if they do use the supports that we have available, I'm assuming that that does not negate the possibility of using these other current supports that are coming through the Fed system.
So your assumption is correct that there is no reduction of this grant that I just described caused by the use of any other service provided at the college. And some of the support systems you just referenced are still ongoing. They're more targeted. So students have to show a more discreet need in those, some of those panoply of supports you just described. Whereas this, this grant is, as I mentioned, for every student in this term who has met those rather minimal requirements.
And we still have students that are applying for Hawkstrong and those other funding that we supply currently?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Watts.
So I'll just mention that with this latest funding released from December, that some of the students can get anywhere between $6,000 to $2,000 a one-time payment. Is that, how is that determined? Is it determined by, based on number of classes that, or credits that they're taking currently in the winter semester?
Yes. It is determined by a couple of factors. One is assessing student need. And the Congress and the executive branch directed that we should make sure that it is more targeted to students of higher socioeconomic need. And the proxy for that typically is those eligible for Pell Grants. So there are, there are at least two factors and I'm happy to go through all the factors for the board if it would like. But the two factors that help us decide who is of the most need is those that are Pell-eligible and those that are taking more credits.
All right, thank you.
And President Cavalluna, I know we've seen some gauges as to how this is going to be divided. Is it going to be up on the college website?
Yeah, so right now it is on the college website. In fact, I suspect Vice President Delong can put in the chat a link to the website that outlines the details of this process and has a link for students to submit their application. She's got an interesting picture. It's a, it's a piggy bank with a mask on it, coronavirus mask.
All right, trustee Mosip. So I know we're requiring that the student would submit their FAFSA, but if they were not allowed or they were not granted any Pell Grants, but rather loans, are they still eligible?
Yeah, in fact, we go one level deeper than this and that is the expected family contribution is another analysis to see for those students who are not Pell-eligible, but yet still have a higher need than some other students. There's another strata that gives them a little bit more than the bottom, which is 600. So the answer to the question is yes. Simply not being eligible for Pell does not eliminate the student getting the opportunity for an award.
President Cavalluna, did you have any other items?
No, I just asked for an opportunity to address the action items after, at the end of the board meeting. The next agenda item is special reports. And at the risk of stepping on the secretary's toes, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Secretary, I'll just introduce the next item.
No problem, go ahead, Mr. Secretary.
The board's next agenda item is special reports. There's one segment in this part of the agenda and it is Why Dearborn Sings. It's my pleasure to introduce the PhD of Musicology, also known as Dr. Nealon, also known as the Vice President of Economic Affairs, my friend, Dr. Nealon.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I was thinking about how to introduce Kevin Dewey, who needs no introduction. So I thought I'd rather introduce a well-known hymn that is probably made best known by Enya. Mucci sang it. How can I keep from singing? Listen to the first, the first strophe of this. "My life goes on in endless song above earth's lamentations. I hear the real though far-off hymn that hails a new creation. Through all the tumult and the strife, I hear its music ringing, sounds an echo in my soul. How can I keep from singing?" It's a beautiful, beautiful metaphor. And there he's going to pick it up. Right now, unless we're going to put the snifter jar up, we're not getting paid, so we don't have to sing. But it made me think of this wonderful project that's been ongoing. At a time of great tumult and confusion and chaos, there's still something within our human spirit that wants to join together and make something beautiful happen. And that's what Kevin and our students have been able to do with other community members and making a learning and artistic community among themselves. And so Kevin, I turn this over to you with thanks and applause for the wonderful technology coming together to make music happen during this time of otherwise silent silence.
Thank you very much, Vice President Nealon and President Cavalluna, Chairman Thorpe and the members of the school board for giving me a couple of minutes of time. I know your time is very valuable tonight. Been working on all, the whole school year, we've been working on virtual choir performances with the various choral groups. We have two out of our five groups that have been continuing through the pandemic. And we have at YouTube, we have a channel that we just recently opened called HFC Music. And we have 13 selections that we have produced so far and are posted up there. And I'm going to play them all for you right now. No, I'm just kidding. But the large project that Dr. Nealon was just referring to is called Why Dearborn Sings. And we've taken the song that's called Why We Sing and we have collaborated, the Henry Ford groups have collaborated with our three public high schools here in Dearborn. Dearborn High School, Etsel Ford and Fortton and their instrumental and vocal music directors and their students. And we're right in the process of creating a virtual choir. There are well over 200, almost 250 submissions, contributions to this virtual choir performance of the song Why We Sing from students from all four of the schools, the three high schools plus Henry Ford College. And so we're very excited. The release date of that is going to be a week from tomorrow, 7:00 PM YouTube premiere. And I'll send you the link for that later, chair people, our chairman and board people. But tonight, what I wanted to show you very briefly is the song performed by the staff, by the choir directors and the band directors and other staff members, musicians in the Dearborn Public Schools, performing this song. We just thought we would do it for fun as a nice little inspiration for the students. So tonight you'll get to see and hear the staff performing the song. And then next Tuesday, you can tune in and see the world premiere of the video with all the, over 100 students. And then Lisa Meyer, who was a coordinator of music for Dearborn Public Schools, will be presenting to you on April 8th at your meeting that night to give sort of a follow-up on how everything went. So with no further ado, that's about all the ado I've got. It's a very dewy presentation. HFC Music, right? And there are 13 selections where you click on videos and you'll see there are 13 up there. The one that I'm playing for you now is the staff performance of Why We Sing. Give me a thumbs up if you can see and hear this. Thank you very much. Satkowski, she's the choir. You think? And one of the most important names to mention is Jeremy Palmer, one of our 18-hour employees at the college in the music department, who produces and does the final audio mastering and the video production.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Kevin? I'll start with one and it's partially a statement. Since we've been dealing with this pandemic and having to do things remotely, I think through all the different subjects and what it's like trying to teach this remotely, what I think of music as being especially challenging when you're trying to figure out how to coordinate people that aren't together. How has this been going for music departments?
Challenging is the best word you could use for that. It's been exciting though because the opportunity of performing, it's sort of like studio performing, one at a time. I call it going full queen. Like for instance, in that you heard me singing tenor four times and bass four times and Gillian singing alto four times and Jen singing soprano four times, just like Freddie Mercury when he recorded Bohemian Rhapsody, he recorded himself singing many, many, many times. So I call it going full queen. So that's one of the things that's actually kind of fun about it. But those younger students, the high school students and many of our college students who are of traditional age are having the hardest time of this because they meet challenges when they're trying to sing. And you know, when we have rehearsal via Zoom, they get teased, they get mocked, they get bullied by their brothers and sisters and family members who are in the house. So it's very, very challenging for them, very difficult. And that's why a lot of the people that are involved at the college are some of our more mature-aged members because they're probably in their own place or they don't, they don't really care about that sort of thing. But it is a wonderful opportunity. And we have a couple more I'll be telling you about at future meetings. Some other ways that we're singing during the pandemic.
Have we been having anyone come into the studios yet to record for this or other things?
No, 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 not yet, not yet. Maybe this fall, hopefully this fall, some.
Trustee Watts.
I just wanted to say thank you. My husband's a musician at night, lawyer during the day, musician at night. So I'm surrounded by music all the time, but I think it's So I'm surrounded by music all the time, but I think it's, thank you for reminding me what it sounds like to have more than just my own music in my house. So thank you for that was, it was a nice treat for us to hear that. Thank you.
It's our pleasure. Thanks for the opportunity.
Trustee McDonald.
Yeah, I also wanted to thank you, Kevin, and everyone that was involved. And I had the same question Jim had, but since you answered that one, just stretching that one out a little bit. What are you learning in the other students? Are you learning things from this experience that will really allow you to expand what you're able to do in the future?
Absolutely. One of the things I mentioned was the idea that we can have more, more recordings. For instance, our numbers are pretty low. We have 20 something in the college choir right now. But they can, they'll send in two or three or four recordings of themselves. So we'll make a recording that sounds like 60 or 70 singers. Well, you certainly can't do that live with 20 people. So little things like that, but also it's, when you record yourself singing, it's two sides of the coin. On one side, it's nerve wracking and it's very, you know, you're putting yourself out there. Cause when you, when you hear the recording that you make, it's just your voice. You know, it's not like singing in a choir where you're all singing together. You know, so you're very exposed and you hear yourself maybe for the first time on a recording by yourself. And yet, when you put all those voices together, it makes a real nice. You know, when you put the voices together, the sum is definitely greater. But the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. And you get a nice reward out of that opportunity. But people have improved, I think their singing voices because of the microscope they've put themselves under. Under which they've put themselves.
Trustee Pellicoff.
I also wanted to thank you, Kevin, for that. To me, music, you listen to very emotional response. And I'm sure that's part of what the challenge is as well. Because when you're all together, you can all lean into that emotion in person that you don't quite get that same kind of connectivity, doing it independently in your own room. So I can't wait and I look forward to the day when everybody can be back into the same, same combined joint forces of experiences. But I really do appreciate that. That inspired me once again to go back to listening and, and not just forgetting what it's like to experience those kinds of sounds.
It is a great experience when, to be able to do something this way. But we have, as I said, there's two other technologies that we're incorporating this semester with some of our students. And I'll come back and report to you about those as well. Another day.
Any additional questions for Mr. Dewey? Thanks a lot for that song. We look forward to seeing what it's like with the students next week. And we will do everything we can to push that out to everybody in the community so they can hear what's going on still.
Thank you for the opportunity. You have a good meeting.
It was great.
Next item, please.
Next item is discussion items, purchasing procedures for coronavirus related purchases. Board report 4583, Vice President Satkowski.
Mister Chairman, if you, if you don't mind, I will begin the discussion on this item. And the chairman of the policy committee asked me to use this time to also report out what the policy committee did. And so when we get to the latter part of your agenda, I'll ask you to reference my comments here. The policy committee met on this very topic this evening prior to your meeting. And discussed the board report 4583. And it essentially asks the board to consider giving the administration the authority to change the guidelines by which it procures particular items during the pandemic. And there was thorough discussion about this topic. And in addition to the things that are noted in this board report, trustees asked whether this proposed change in the guidelines of how we procure things and products would go on forever. And whether there were any guidelines that would still apply. And how the board would, if it did approve these changes in guidelines, how the board would stay abreast of the things that were being purchased by the college. And you can see in your board report that the administration is seeking the authority to purchase things during, frankly, a pandemic that has really put kinks and halts and wreck havoc on the supply chain across the country and the world. That has limited the ability of the administration to procure these types of things. And some examples that came out through a great question by trustee Moses was, what, what is the college really suffering here as a result? And Director of Purchasing Fred Steiner was able to explain that, for instance, the procurement of Chromebooks was delayed in one instance. And the procurement of Plexiglas to set the campus up to be resistant to the spread of the pandemic for the few number of students and staff who are on campus. And the proposed change in the guidelines also gives the board the comfort of knowing what types of purchases the college would be making by having monthly reports on this process. There's also some comfort from a board member's view in knowing that the guidelines that would be used would be those issued by the federal government and the federal government purchasing guidelines. And also that those, those guidelines require bids for particular types of purchases. And then finally, a question was asked about how long this would go on. And the first answer is, well, this would be limited only to the purchase of items by using funds distributed to the college from the federal government for response to the coronavirus. Some of those funds you and I discussed as they were being moved to students, but there's also some funds that are directed towards the institution to spend money for ways we've been tasked with handling the pandemic. And so that is a brief discussion of why the administration is bringing this to the board. And that discussion ensued at the policy committee. But a second part of this was whether this is a policy change for the board, which would trigger the board's bylaw that this be proposed at one board meeting and then voted on in a subsequent board meeting. Or whether this, if the board were to find it acceptable, was simply a guideline direction to the administration that would not require a reading now and then another reading at a subsequent board meeting, at which time a vote would be called if the board were inclined to take a motion in a second on that topic. So those were the discussion points. I, with the, with the discussion as it took place at the policy committee, the three trustees on that committee tended to gain a consensus that this likely could be seen as a guideline, not a policy change, such that a second reading would not be necessary. And the committee also tasked the administration with making one small change to the proposed guideline. And I'm happy to read that to you all. I'm also happy to let the chair of the committee talk now or during his committee report or answer any questions that trustees have on the proposed guideline change. Or the question about whether this is a policy change or a guideline change. And again, remember your bylaws require a second reading if it is indeed a policy change.
President Cavallou, if you don't mind, if you would read the, this, the proposal with the amendment so that can be part of the discussion at this point, please.
Yeah, Vice President Satkowski, did you jot down what the committee wanted the guideline to be changed? It was, I think it was either one or two sentences.
Yes, I wrote it down. I was just going to text it to you, but I can read it to you right now. And I've been texting with Vice President Clark on this to get the front end of this setup so that we're referring to the policy. And that is, it reads as follows, that the Board of Trustees modify the administrative guidelines for purchasing that accompany purchasing policy 2450 and establish guidelines for purchases procured with federal COVID relief funds, parentheses, C R R F A, close parentheses, and follow the federal procurement guidelines. This decision will be reviewed at the August 2021 Board of Trustees meeting to determine if the guidelines need to be extended.
That's the way I understood it. Trustee Moses or trustee Watts, if you have anything else to add.
Oh, that sounds good.
That's the recommendation, President Thorpe. So if you want to open up for discussion with the rest of the board at this point.
All right. Any questions from any trustees in regards to this item? Trustee McDonald.
Yes, I'm glad that they added the stipulation that it would be reviewed in August. That was one of the concerns that I had. And I just need some clarification. When I was reading over the, the policy, and I know this is a guideline, but my understanding when I was looking over that was that this could still fall into our written policy as a sole source provider. Because under that policy, it says that you can use a sole source if the, if any one of the following things occur. And one of the things was it's an emergency and that could cause delays in obtaining the items that you need. So I was just wondering if that just doesn't apply in this case, or if that part of the policy does apply because this is an emergency. I just wanted some clarification on that.
Yes, a very, very good point. And trustee Moses brought that up in our committee meeting. So President Cavalluna, if you or Mr. Satkowski would like to address that, please.
Yeah, I, I, I'll give a first initial response and let Mr. Steiner, the director of purchasing, make any comments he'd like. Or Vice President Satkowski. But trustee McDonald, the, the board has given the administration through a board policy, the authority to set guidelines about how we purchase things. And in that guideline includes an opportunity for the college to do sole source procurement. That exists and has existed. Now this proposal would change the guidelines such that the board wouldn't have to vote on things occur, things purchased during the pandemic. But inside of that, I, I can't, I can't quite remember. So I'm going to ask Mr. Steiner to confirm, but inside of that, there probably also is a sole source procedure in this new guideline. Mr. Steiner, have I recited that correctly? I don't know if Mr. Steiner's on the call.
Yes, yes, you did. And the federal guidelines for what, what they call sole source or non-competitive proposals are pretty well defined. The item is only available from a single source. We mentioned about a public emergency for the requirement will not permit a delay from a competitive solicitation. And it is not likely, in my opinion, that we will need very many sole, you know, if any sole source awards under, under this temporary situation. The biggest problems that we have are getting commodity type items that everyone else is trying to, to get, whether it's a private business or in the public sector or households. We're all competing with each other for a limited supply. So those items tend to be available from multiple sources. And we would handle, in this case, a sole source award, much like we would currently. And in those cases, since there would not be a bidding process, the delay would be minimized. And we could go to the board for approval of sole sources over, you know, the current board limits. That's, that's really not where I see the biggest difficulty in trying to get the goods that, that we require.
Okay, so I understand that that could possibly fall into that realm. But then you're also looking at delays because you still have to get board approval for that, which would delay it for each meeting. So, okay, that answers my question, I understand. And I have no issues with it. But like I said, I am glad to see that it will be revisited periodically because this is not something that I want us to forget about. And it just ends up being into perpetuity that way. So thank you, thank you, Fred.
Sure. If I can just add, trustee McDonald, that the regular chain of communication will continue where President Cavalluna would be advising Chair Thorpe of what's going on. Then, you know, sooner than later, you know, let the whole board know through his notes or whatever communication. And, you know, trustee Moses did mention Sunset Clause, which, you know, what we're talking about would expire August 20th. But when we meet, you know, early August, we can go ahead and extend it another 90, 120 days, what have you. If it's working, if it's not working, then we'll have a different discussion, obviously. So I believe.
Trustee Pellicoff, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, I want to make sure I understand our, first off, yeah, guidelines is an authority we give to the president of the college through, through our bylaws. It's under our legislative bylaw that he can set up the guidelines that honor the policy that we already have in place. This is not changing the policy, this is changing the guidelines. I agree with that. But I've got two questions. One, are we vacating the threshold of dollar expenditure? Where we have to, in the, you know, we normally have to approve over a certain dollar figure. So that's my first question.
So the answer to that is yes. The policy that currently exists gives the administration the duty to set up guidelines. And in that guideline, each year, the administration sets the threshold for which the board has to act dependent upon the service or good being procured.
Right.
If this guideline change is changed, it will use the federal guidelines to, to direct how Mr. Steiner's department will procure goods for the limited question of those that he is procuring from federal dollars to address coronavirus. And in those, there are structures for certain amounts of money spent and the procedures that must take place with them. But in none of them does it trigger a board vote. In fact, that is the utility of this proposal. That if all those things are met, it's for coronavirus response through federal dollars issued to the college for coronavirus response. And the federal guidelines are followed, then the administration can seek those goods and get them before a competitor bids for them and gets them off the shelf. But you, that is a good point, trustee Pellicoff. This does on that unique circumstance, it does take the board vote away on any threshold. Now, the one thing that trustee Barry brought up, which is part of this proposed guideline is that the administration is obligated to make monthly reports to the full board on what things have been procured under this new guideline.
Okay, so then this, this segues into my second question of, because we, we don't have access to see the guidelines online. So all I know is what our policies are and our bylaws are. So I don't know what the specifics are in the guidelines. With the federal guidelines, I'm not certain of what they look like either. And we've heard horror stories about a lot of federal guidelines that are even loosey gooseier when it comes to dollars being spent on procurement of things. That being said, what qualifies as, are, are these federal guidelines? Are they very specific about what qualifies as a COVID related procurement? Because. Procurement because while we're competing with things. That might be impacted directly by the pandemic environment right now. There's also a lot of other things out there. That are being impacted, say, that that began before this with the trade deals that we. Had struggled with in foreign countries such as China and whatever, and they stopped shipping a lot of things. Or started started making it difficult to procure things. Not because of a pandemic, but because they didn't like the trade policies. The US government was exerting. So how how do we differentiate what's a need that's COVID-related procurement as opposed to just we're having a hard time getting something? Because other people are placing. Blockades in the pathway of it.
Yes, those are important questions, trustee Pellicoff. The first is related to what what are these guidelines? How do you have some visibility on that? The the board report that I believe that Mr. Dimitri circulated. Was Board Report forty five eighty three, and it's got two attachments, A and B. Attachment B is is the the guideline. It's a six-page document. And it it may have been easy to miss because it it has the.
I've got it.
Yeah, okay, so so that's that's the 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 guideline that adopts the federal guideline, so to speak. Now. You know, I I I believe I know the answer to your your second pivotal question is, okay, well, how are you going to define whether it's for this limited purpose of COVID nineteen stimulus funds? I I'll let Mr. Steiner address that because I'm not sure my answer is correct. So, Mr. Steiner, do you have an opinion on that?
Yes, the the way the college defines. COVID nineteen. Funds really is based on what qualifies for the grant. And when it qualifies for a grant. Such as the CARES Act that we've been using for the the past year. There's specific. General ledger account numbers applied to that purchase, which goes on to the requisition. That requisition is approved by the requesting department director. A lot of our purchases come out of. IT services. Joe Zidnik and I have been working closely together on this along with. Mr. Salkowski on formulating this policy. So it first has to qualify for funding from the federal government for the COVID. Nineteen relief. So it's tied to the legislation in that way. And that restricts the types of purchases that would apply to this act. That's really the limiting thing on here. We're not looking for a very, we're looking at a very narrow definition. Responding to COVID funded by the federal government, government or passed down through the states. So it's. A very particular targeted subset of all the goods and services that we're buying.
Okay, wow.
But that let me let me go one step further with Fred. What that means is that if it is not paid for under COVID. Grant, then this policy would not be put in place. If we're going to be using general fund monies to buy. Protection things, equipment that that we're doing out of our general fund, we go by our current. Guidelines that are established in our purchasing policy. This is strictly just based on any dollars coming from. CARES one, CARES two, and CARES three that meet the guidelines for federal federal purchases.
Well, but what trustee Pellicoff is saying is we would never do this, but if another school in another area wanted to buy. Basketball with this hundred thousand dollars worth of basketballs. What would be in place to stop them from saying this was this was to deal with COVID nineteen? It was basketballs. Is it the 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 report that we'd be making to the board each month, or are there other controls? Is that what your question was, trustee Pellicoff?
That would have to be, is that it? That would have to be listed under our reporting when we would ask for reimbursement from the CARES Act. That we spent a hundred thousand dollars for basketballs, and they would say, that's not COVID-related. That doesn't qualify. That does not. Go within within the guidelines of of federal funds. So that would be something that. You wouldn't even consider purchasing with with federal funds because the guidelines. Make it related strictly directly to COVID COVID-related activities.
And Mr. Salkowski, who is they? Is it?
The federal. Yeah, the the DOE. I mean, Kevin could be more specific on that, but it would be the DOE because whenever we've been going in. Just as an example, when we talked earlier about the student funds for 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 CARES, we had to go in under Part One when we did that back in winter of twenty twenty. Specify what those funds were going to be used for, put that on a report to the DOE, and then they sent us our money for. For that for that those expenditures. So it's a reporting, and that has to be audited also.
What I was gonna ask, is that audited? Okay.
Our auditors, yeah, Plant Moran has looked at Part One, and they will continue to be part of that process.
But before we even get to that point, part of the checks and balances would be a discussion between President Cavalluna and Chair Thorpe.
Correct.
And if President Cavalluna comes in and says, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars, I think, you know, I think there will be an issue there. So, yeah, there's a lot of checks and balances and the fact that. This is going along with the federal government's plan. And anytime you get money from the federal government, they're pretty tight on what you can spend it on, what you can't spend it on. So I myself am very comfortable with moving forward with this.
And and I'll also point out for the board and the public that. In the document titled Purchases Funded by COVID nineteen Relief Grants. You know, section four, paragraph three, under procurement standards. Any any purchase we make according to this standard has to have the approval of the president. The Vice President of Financial Services and the Purchasing Director. So. No one person is, you know, going to designate what. You know, is funded in this manner. So there's another check and balance internally within the college.
And so a monthly report to us would show all of this information as well?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And and the background, when this was first brought to me. I agree with the premise. It's that if we need to get things, we'd like to get things in a hurry, and we have to wait till another board meeting. Before we can start moving forward. I understand where the college is coming from. It was when I see the word policy that have we had our policy committee look at it? And it still seems like there's a little bit of a go around between it's a guideline that leads to a policy. So. As long as the policy committee has given their blessing on everything. I think we're we're good to move ahead. Now, is this a separate action item, or would this be something that we would go forward with when we're doing the rest of our action items?
This is something that we can move on right now.
And I I think, but I but then I I so that we're not violating our bylaws, I think that we have to quit calling it a policy then. This looks appears to be more to be. A guideline. Yes.
Exactly.
So who has? Who has the wording for what this would be so we can make the motion?
I can read it again if you'd like like me to and.
If you if you could, Mr. Salkowski, just so we can make sure we've got it for the record.
And then I could get it to Kathy for for recording. So. It's as follows, that the Board of Trustees modify the administrative guidelines. For purchasing that a company purchasing policy twenty four fifty. And establish guidelines for purchases procured with federal COVID relief funds. C R R F A in parentheses, and follow the federal procurement guidelines. This decision will be reviewed at the August twenty twenty one Board of Trustees meeting. To determine if the guidelines need to be extended.
I move what John just said as a motion.
Support.
We've got a motion from trustee Barry, support by trustee McDonald. Any further discussion on this item? I don't see anyone with their hands up. Could I have a roll call vote?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mazup, yes. Trustee Petruskoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
Chair Thorpe?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much to the administrators and the policy committee for their work on this. Next item, please.
Action items, we start with citizen participation. Any member of the public who wishes to submit a written request. To provide a public statement during the public comment portion of the board meeting will provide. The electronic request to Adel Mozop M A A D E L. At H F C C dot E D U by seven ten on March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. A public comment emails will be. Read by a designated board member, so the comment might be heard by those electronically attending the meeting. The board rules for the content and length of the public statement remains. As if the meeting was was held in person. As if right now, I do not have any public comments to read. I've not received any emails.
Mr. Dimitri, did any others come through?
No, I have nothing.
Great, next item.
Okay, are there any action items on this agenda which board? Members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude them from the action below. Move to approve action items one through five as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion by trustee Barry and supported by trustee Pellicoff. Any discussion, any questions on any of these action items?
I have a question on item number two.
Just a question, you don't need to.
Just a question, yeah, it's not of.
Questions on any other items? All right, trustee Moser, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, it's really quick. I know this is a significant increase, and I know it's because we have also a significant increase in in servers. But all of these servers are production kind of thing, live environment that we need them to be. That we need to have disaster recovery for them. Or some can be excluded and see any kind of savings.
Mr. Salkowski, can you address that?
Joe would probably be the better one to do it, but this. This this is in relationship to the first. Request where we're increasing our number of of servers. It is also CARES funded because of the increase in capacity of the servers and tying it into. Just use of the network, the out, the. The use of the network for distance learning and for just for exposure and expansion, we decided to increase. This this request due to the fact that we are increasing our server capacity as well. So. I noticed that when I was looking through this, that that the first one is CARES-related, the hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. This increase in the the security as well falls within CARES funding part one. I don't know if that answers your question, Adam, because I'm not the technical guru expert on it, but.
Mr. Zidnik, did you need to add anything?
No, um, yes, we we're constantly evaluating our DR system and and it has. What 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 we found is the supporting services to to make the, for instance, the ERP system available, it requires authentication servers and web servers. So we're constantly evaluating those servers. I expect some will be, some will be pulled out and others will be added because it's kind of a fluid process. But as as we would reduce, those costs would go down.
But at this point, we're at at this particular level.
Correct.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions for any of the action items. I would ask a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mozop, yes. Trustee Petruskoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
Chair Thorpe?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Next item?
Board Committee Reports.
So I see that trustee Barry already handed the reins over to. President Cavallino, so he didn't have to report on that policy.
We did have a policy committee before this meeting, and yes, we covered that earlier in our meeting. Thank you.
Trustee Moser, one of the big items that we discussed last month was the ad hoc committee meeting. I know that some information's been going out about that one. Has an initial meeting been scheduled yet?
We have not scheduled a meeting, but we're looking to send welcome letters to the committee members this coming week. As well as to decide on which date in April to have our first meeting. So Kathy and President Cavallona and I are are working through these details. And we'll be able to set something up in April.
Thank you. I don't recall of any other committees have met since we were last together. So I think we're good to go on to the next item.
Sure. Request for information and or future agenda items.
Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, the board asked me to consider and advise on options for this group coming together in a modality. Different than the current modality for that meeting, and frankly, the current modality for this meeting. I met with virtually with the chairman on multiple occasions to discuss that issue. And I also attended this board's meeting last week, which was hybrid, partially in person. And as it conducted its business regarding the P twelve. This meeting that we had tonight was in Zoom, full virtual, after consultation with the board chair. And I will continue to work with the board chair and find when it's necessary and appropriate to meet. In a hybrid fashion, and in part of that analysis, I had lengthy and helpful conversations with. Dr. Maleko, the superintendent of the Dearborn Public School System. So I continue to work on that trustees, and I do believe, and I'm fully confident that when I am directed by the board. To accomplish a meeting in in a format similar to what you experienced last week with the P twelve, that we will be ready and able to do that.
Thank you, President Cavallina. Does the board have any requests for information or future agenda items? Next item, please.
Board member commentary.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, I want to say happy Women's History Month to everyone. And again, I want to thank President Cavalluna for always. Giving us a little synopsis of what different things mean and as far as celebrations that we do. And to add on to that, I just heard two minutes prior to coming on to this meeting, and I'm so excited that Deb Holland was. Granted or given her cabinet position as the first Native American to serve in the presidential cabinet cabinet, and she is. Interior Secretary, which I think is more than appropriate. So I'm very excited about her nomination. And she is, um, Interior Secretary, which I think is more than appropriate. So I'm very excited about her nomination. And I just wanted to again, just wish everyone a happy Women's History Month.
Trustee Pellicoff.
I just wanted to put a shout out there, um, for those it, who are in the viewing audience and, and or have friends or family who are still looking for COVID vaccination, that, um, the city of Dearborn has, um, a vaccination clinic at, uh, Performing Arts. If you go to the cityofdearborn.org site, you, and click on the link on their front page, you'll see what the, um, qualifications are. They are now at the point of fifty, uh, years and up with comorbidities and or sixty-five and up, just plain sixty-five and up. And I believe, um, individuals who are caregivers for, um, others um, in their household who are compromised health-wise. So please go to the cityofdearborn.org site. It's for anybody who lives not only in the city of Dearborn, but Garden City, uh, Allen Park, Melvindale, and
The Heights, yeah.
The Heights, Dearborn Heights, yes. So, um, if you know of anyone who is looking, um, now we are seeing, uh, more opportunities, um, for vaccinations, but I know that we've had a lot of questions about it. I want, I want you to know they're still available here in the city of Dearborn as well.
Thanks for mentioning that. Any additional comments? Next item, please. Sorry, yes.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just want to thank the board for uh, endorsing our request to bring on some new teammates and, uh, I'd like to uh, say hello to them. I believe some of them are attending tonight. Uh, one of those who I believe is attending is Martina Jones. I am proud to welcome her as a campus safety associate. And, uh, she's not new to the college. Uh, she has been working here as a Securitas employee and now she's a campus safety associate after three and a half years. I look forward to seeing her on campus. Uh, Tammy Kumar is, uh, now the construction and project coordinator in the facilities department. She, um, was a construction supervisor at the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor, and I'm always proud that we can steal away talent from that, um, that little school in Ann Arbor. And, uh, she has seven years of experience there. And, um, of course, uh, one of the individuals who I'm uh, really excited to welcome aboard is Tracy Davis, who will be filling the second of our most recent, um, assistant directors in the, uh, human resources department. Ms. Davis will be the direct assistant director, uh, performance development and engagement. Um, she has a stellar background in academics and over twenty years of experience in that position. And, uh, I do believe she is relocated, uh, from out of state into I believe her native home in Southeast Michigan. So we're excited to have her. And of course, when we, when we are able to come back in person, I, I hope to be able to have them, uh, put a name with a face for you all. But in the meantime, I wanted to say welcome to all, uh, of my new teammates. Um, uh, Ms. Jones, Ms. Kumar, uh, and Ms. Davis. Um, I, uh, I appreciate, uh, you all coming to the team. I look forward to working with you. Oh, and one more thing while we were working on this, um, uh, I know you all had questions about, uh, the, the way students will request funding under that, uh, discussion at the beginning of this meeting. Um, I, uh, I sent you all an email just now, board members, uh, the website where students are directed. And you'll see there, uh, the information, some of which you asked about. And by last count, that website has been visited and it went up today. It's been visited over three thousand two hundred times. So my, my hope is that, um, we will get, uh, students engaged and, um, access to that support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see that John McDonald has his hand up. I don't know if that was on, I guess you're not.
Well, my apologies. I thought we were announcing, um, c- celebrations coming up and I wanted to celebrate.
Oh, yeah.
Notre Dame?
Well,
McDonald's.
Can sweat you if you give me a moment, but no, Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone.
Thanks, John. Trustee Watts, did I see your hand up?
I wanted to follow up with trustee Petrikov because act, in regards to vaccines, Access is also collaborating with Meyer. And this week they're holding, um, vaccines at their location and walk-ups are welcome and they're administering the Moderna vaccine. So it's nine o'clock to five o'clock as well. So um, that's another opportunity for our community to get vaccinated, um, and then March twenty-second, unless it changes and gets bumped up, then those fifteen over without pre-existing conditions will be eligible. So just another opportunity to receive vaccines. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, April twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, uh, P to twelve, Board of Education meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frank Chief Boardroom, following the guidelines of the state law and virtually available live via the YouTube channel for the district as well as the Facebook page and cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen. Monday, April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, HFC meeting, seven PM. Details to be determined and announced.
Wishing everyone a great evening. This meeting is adjourned.